Jazz Red Talk Show and I'm your host Jazz Red. We told you we were gonna start rebuilding but we're tearing down. You know, it's a start. We're gonna tear it down. I got a power washer. We're gonna power wash. We're gonna do what we can do today to get in there and assess and see what we need to help this sister. Tell them your name, sister. And tell them about this house and your parents, how they fed people and gave clothes. You tell them your name.
Hi, my name is Michelle McCall. 657 Donald Street is where my mother and father, Jack McCall and Kada McCall, built this house up. And my father used to give clothes away. We could give our clothes away. He had to take them overseas and give it to people overseas. My mom was a community woman. She helped with LaFlore High School. She helped with the park, the first pool that was here before the big pool is. She was a member of St. Peter's Baptist Church. Actually, she was a leader in church. And my daddy was a merchant seaman. And they always went around the community just giving and giving and helping and helping. If you ask my daddy, "Mr. Jack, do you need me to help you?" He said, "No, I need to help you." So he did that, you know, and everything. My momma used to be a Cub Scout leader. She's a good woman. Micah Ubank used to be in her Cub Scouts. There's a lot of them. I wish I were here to help. I know some of y'all said y'all was coming later on this evening. And I'll be right here waiting for you to pitch in. We are also getting ready to start. We're back here cleaning up. We're cleaning up. We gotta clean up before we build. We're cleaning up this all this debris where everything caved in. And that is what we doing now. We even had a big bus to pull up to come help. I mean, we got this parking lot almost full right here across the street from our biggest park.
A lot of people are coming when they get off work. I got off at six, but I had to go take a bath, throw in some old work clothes, some shoes again. And come on over here. I had to bring some stuff. We're taking donations for anything. Like I brought some roofing nails and some felt. We're getting ready to rebuild. We just gotta tear this stuff down. Jazz is gonna start the... I'm gonna do some power washing, but I'm gonna go back here and help move some of this stuff. They're knocking it down. We just trying. We doing a little... You know, I just wanted her to see something done today. Someone came and cut your grass?
Yes, they came and cut the grass. I was surprised about that. They came and cut the grass and cleaned the yard.
Tell them about the big thing we got yesterday.
Aw, man. Come here yesterday. We had a big dumpster that was delivered yesterday by hauling it off. So it's here, they dropped it, then went on by their business. So hey, we here to put it to use. That is what we're gonna do. We're gonna do it today. And this is... This won't not be the last day. Law as will and say as possible, we wanna be here every Saturday. If y'all have time. We need some men. Need some men to please come on and help and volunteer to help the cause of the house being set on fire. And I really appreciate it.
I'm gonna take you around for those of you all that hadn't seen some of the house. It was set afire around Christmas time, a little bit before Christmas, and she was gonna try to move in. And when I heard the situation, I said, "Wow." We shouldn't be waiting around in our communities and neighborhoods for people to help. We should get out and roll our sleeves up and help these folks, man. And it ain't about money. It's just about trying to show them, show them a little love. And we can do this. We can do this. So Jazz Red Talk Show is sponsoring this. We know we got a lot of other stuff we gotta do. We got a lot of other stuff we gotta do. We gonna handle all that next week. But some people are stepping up to the plate and we'll show them when they come. But there's some folks supposed to step up to the plate today. So what I'm gonna do is take you and show you the house. For those of you all who had not seen the house, we're gonna go around on this side and show you. Our daughter, the amp, will go around there. We're just gonna talk loud, but we'll see. When we come back, we're gonna show you the house. For somebody that set somebody's house on fire, we just gonna shame them. Then we gonna make them look bad. Because we ain't thinking about them. We trying to get this thing fixed back up. We don't have time. We need paint, white paint, maroon paint. It's stuff that we need to get this back together. And we gonna show us some love. And I'm gonna do this through the duration. See, because Jazz, I don't give up. I gotta be done. When it's done, then I'll be done. We cut that ribbon. I ain't gonna let up until we do it. So every Saturday, we gonna be here and we're just gonna get it done. We're gonna get it done. Tell them we gonna show them the house.
We getting ready to show you the house from the back here where you see the drop thing is. And also, you get to peek on the inside, how bad damage it is.
Alright. Alright, y'all be quiet. Jazz Red Talk Show. And we've got some music, a little music going on. But this is the house, 657... That was set on... 657 Donald Street that was set on fire. See the top, smoke? Wow. This is it. But we gonna help bring her back. There's just people in the community gonna show up. We got organizations here. We got people that just say they gonna show up. We gonna assess and see what we need, get all our permits and everything. We know we have to have them. We're just power washing today. We know we got some business to do. And we gonna do it too. And we gonna finish. We gonna get her done. Let me show you the side. Jazz Red Talk Show and this is the top of the house. The back part was what was caught on fire. So we got smoke damage and everything. And it's a shame that somebody set somebody mom's house on fire. Her mom had passed, but she had done so much in the community to it's just totally embarrassing. It is totally embarrassing. I don't know what this world is coming to. You make us good people just... I go in, I shut the door. I don't be wanting to be bothered, you know, because people aren't right, man. And some of them have sickness. If you like setting stuff on fire, you got a problem. It's a problem. It's a mental problem. Y'all know that. And they got medication and everything. You need to go get yourself straight. Need to go to one of them centers and get yourself straight. Because this is... This could've took somebody's life. You don't know if somebody would've been in the house. This is a shame. It's a shame. But we gonna go and show you some of the back part. Wow. Like I say, we just trying to maybe power wash, do a little something, knock down some boards, maybe, you know. We gonna do the best we can do in one day, but every Saturday, we gonna come back. So more people, if you have work and you don't be able on next Saturday, the Saturday... We gonna do it every Saturday until we finish. It's gonna be a long process, but we gonna get it done. We gonna get it done. Jazz Red, we love you. Peace out. Jazz Red Talk Show, this is the back part of the house. Some of the debris that's down. And the fire department brought some of... A lot of this down, I mean, for us getting in the house, they had to get in. So the fire department did some of our work. We gonna thank you all for coming. And I know it's your job, but still, we appreciate you, Mobile Fire Department. We appreciate you. But this has got to go down. Every Saturday, we gonna show up. Because I'll be here every Saturday. Just other people might can take a Saturday and be off a Saturday, but we gotta do something. We just wanna show her some love and get this stuff, get it down. And it's a lot to move. It's a lot to move. And we just trying to get it to the dumpster. Most of... A lot of it is already down. We just trying to get a lot of it to the dumpster. It's going down. It's going down. I just appreciate people that showed up, man. Because this is what it's about. Jazz Red, we love you. Peace out. Jazz Red Talk Show, it's trying to get dark out here, but we've got a little sister that came to help Michelle. And it's trying to rain. So what's your name?
Leola Chaney.
Okay. What brings you out here today?
Oh, Miss Jazzy, I ran into Michelle through some friends and she let me know that her mom's house had burned down. And I'm just here to lend my support.
Just to come out and help?
Yes, ma'am. Come out and help. Rain, sleet or shine, we out here trying to give her the support she needs to get her mom's house back together. And coming together as a community to make it happen.
Alright. And we got a little bit of a shower coming on. So... And what's your name again?
Leola Chaney.
And I see you wearing a shirt. What that shirt is? Uh-oh.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You running for District 3?
Yes, ma'am. District 3, Mobile City Council.
Alright. So y'all done met this little lady, Miss Leola, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright. Leola Chaney. Jazz is coming out to help. Jazz Red, we love you. Peace out. Jazz Red Talk Show, upon this little sister, Miss Lolita Chaney.
Leola Chaney.
Okay. Leola Chaney has a little something for her. Speak up, girl. What you got?
Well, on behalf of the Leola Chaney Campaign, we wanted to bless you with something that's gonna help you get your rebuilding started for your family's home.
Thank you. Wow. God is good. God is good. God is good. All the time. Sisters helpin', sisters. Sisters helpin', sisters. Jazz Red, I just wanted to show you that little bit. God bless you. Jazz Red Talk Show, we got a young man and some military man. And we gonna let him tell you. I'm gonna want you to speak up because you speak softly there. Alright.
My name is Daniel Henderson Jr. I'm retired Army. Just out here to help the McCall family out and bring awareness to their tragedy that happened at their home. This home has impacted so many people in the community, you know, from the kids sitting on the porch, over getting out of school at the floor, to the kids coming here doing the summer programs over here at Gargis Park. So, you know, this house is a beacon of hope. And we wanna make sure this beacon of hope is relit and is always gonna become... Stay a beacon of hope and just wanna make things better for our community.
Wow.
We just so glad you came, my... Miss Red, Miss Jazzy Red.
Thank you.
Appreciate the effort that you're doing in our community. We just thank you. We know God sent you and we're gonna send more people to help out. And just one wheelbarrow load from one person will make a difference.
That's right.
Appreciate it.
I seen a lady back there picking up something. I like that.
That was my neighbor, Miss Regina.
Wow. I'm gonna have the interview. I'm gonna get my gloves. And y'all gonna see Jazz moving and shaking a little bit. We gonna get some stuff up. I just wanted y'all to see a difference. You know, she was crying and I don't like to see ladies cry, you know. Because when I cry, I be ready to fight. So I don't like to see ladies cry, man. I mean, she just a lady and she cried about it. And I told her, "Don't worry about it. God gonna send some people and they gonna step up."
All good.
Thank you very... How long you was in the military?
Twenty years, nine months, thirty days.
Yeah.
Sir, United States Army are enjoying my time in the military. So it's now out here trying to labor in the community.
Wow.
If I can send one message to anybody out there, evil will only prevail if good people stand by and do nothing.
Wow.
Outta here. Sarge.
Alright. Peace out. Jazz Red Talk Show, that military man that you got, this is baby. Here, this what he rolling with. We got it parked out here. He got the air in case you get hot and go over there. And get a little cool, Jazz is finna go check the inside out. You know me, I like stuff like this. Jazz Red Talk Show, I call this the man cave, but what you call it?
The wagon.
The wagon.
The retired wagon.
The retired wagon. This is for retired... The military retired guys got this. They only letting Jazz in. I don't know if they letting no women up in here now. You gotta be special to get up in here, you know. Because Jazz is cool, but this is the retired wagon, the man cave. They come watch their football. They got the TV up in here. Wait a minute. Now y'all gotta tell... Television up in here, they used to call... My momma used to call it television. But this is a nice, man. I mean, I like stuff like this. But I ain't gonna push it. Y'all know Jazz needs a limo, but I am not pushing it. And I'm not putting it out there for no investors because I don't want none. Y'all know I've been CEO a long time. But this is so nice. I mean, you can just... And he got it running where people can come over here if they tired and hot. Got a big fan, got the air conditioning systems, got the cooler. And ain't nothing in there but water and Gatorade and soda. Yeah, we doing everything decent. Thank you for letting me show this to my... Oh, oh, tell them who your momma is.
Darlene.
Darlene Henderson. This her baby. Boy, I think your birthday... What was your birthday?
August 13th.
She had said, "Say happy birthday to my son." Wow. Darlene Henderson.
On my body.
Wow. This Darlene Henderson's son. Ain't that something? Mobile is small. And look, he got retired cousin. Retired cousin. Jazz Red, alright Darlene, I'm putting your baby out there. Y'all know Darlene was at the club singing last week... Or is it this week? Last week. Last weekend, she was at the Rascal Lounge. I had put a flyer out there for them to come out and see her. Alright. Jazz Red, we love you in the man cave. I called it a man cave. I'd have gave it another name. Jazz Red, peace out.
The retired wagon.
The retired wagon. Peace out. Jazz Red Talk Show, even though it's off and on raining...
Okay.
I'm out here, we gonna do a little something here. You know something, man? The wind... Y'all, watch out. Watch out. Watch out. Watch out. The wind is blowing that way. It's gonna look like... We gotta get away the wind, boy. Huh? You might have to get out the way, y'all. Give me some... Oh, okay. You can go in. Give me that. I walk around here. Watch out, sister. I don't wanna put nothing on you. I told her to get out the way there. Y'all see, I'm gonna do a little something. God is good. I'm finna go to work, but I ain't got time to bring my tape looking at it. So I'm gonna go and go to work. At least y'all see that I'm here. I'm gonna go and go to work. Jazz Red, we love you. Peace. Jazz Red Talk Show and I'm your host Jazz Red. We got another lady that pulled up and wanted to say a little something to this sister.
My name is Angela and I just wanna give a small talking applause for the cause.
Alright. That's what I'm talking about. We showing her some love today. Jazz Red, we love you. Jazz Red Talk Show, it getting a little dark out here. We gonna get ready to pack up. We got a lot of stuff in the trailer for them to move. We just got some more. We gonna come every Saturday. How you doing today, Josephine?
Hello, hello, hello.
Tell them, tell them who you are.
Josephine Dickinson, Evangeline Josephine Dickinson. Always blessing the Lord at all times. Over here blessing the Lord today. With Miss McCall and we just... That's how we bless the Lord, by blessing each other.
That's right. That's right. Miss Dickinson is the owner of Heritage Tribune. And tell them about your paper right quick.
Well, I got it. I brought it up here. I have one in my hand here so I can show it to you. I think a picture of... Ah, Lord, you know how it go.
Tell them about that. Tell them about that.
Pictures of years. You can... You got your business, your graduation, your children, Father's Day coming up, and your obituaries. Now, you don't have to have a reason...
Don't move the paper.
...to put your picture, your loved one's picture and the obituary in our paper. We don't charge for that. Just if you got it, a donation. If you don't have it, this is a community service. So don't let your loved ones get planted and you say nothing about it. That's not fair. So call me and let me tell you, I can't do it. Then that's what I... That's what... But don't try to live my life from it. Because we are here to serve the Lord. And like I said, we serve the Lord by serving one another. So give your family and your loved ones, your graduation babies, your Father's Day. What else coming up? Memorial Day coming up on the 20th this weekend.
Yeah, yeah.
So give honor where honor is due. Because you didn't just happen up here.
Amen.
Somebody laid a foundation and said, "Come on, baby."
Give them their phone number.
251... My phone number is 251-458-1183. One more time. 458... You know that's 251.
Alright. Appreciate you coming out. I knew you were coming.
Oh, yeah.
Jazz Red, we love you. Everybody you see that I film came here. Jazz Red, we love you. Peace out. Jazz Red Talk Show and I'm your host Jazz Red. And we're here with this young man at E&amp;J Auto. Tell them your name there, young man.
My name is Jamar. We at E&amp;J Auto Repair. We at 2251 Costa Rides. We in Tomerville. Up here, we do major, minor auto repair, bodywork, whatever you name it, we do it to the vehicles. Come by and see us.
It's hot?
Yeah.
We don't want their cars running over ACs.
Make sure you got your coolant check. Make sure your fans are working properly. Come by and see us. We at 2251 Costa Rides.
Alright. Stand right there. Alright. Y'all come out and see this young man. Y'all know Jazz has been pumping him because really, they do good work. I don't have to worry about it. I don't have to worry about nothing getting took out or nothing. I mean, just throw him the key and I can go home, go to bed. They'll bring it around to my house and my land.
Yeah. E&amp;J Auto Repair, 2251 Costa Rides. Telephone number 251-479-1317.
Jazz Red, we love you. Come out and see him. E&amp;J Auto. Peace out. Jazz Red Talk Show. He gonna say goodbye and he don't know I always introduce. This is a young man been out of town for a while and he gonna tell you his name and tell you where he used to live. What's your name, young man?
My name is Jerome McNeil.
Be gone.
I'm from Roger William Project. For the last 51 years, I've lived in the Washington DC area. What I've done, I retire from Transit Sisters. I'm a picture taker. Every night and then I do a photograph. And presently, I'm doing some work with the Mobile Beacon.
Good. I know her. Wow.
It is so important that we return something that was given back to us. And one of the ways that we can do it is to support the beacon and its mission. The other thing is, for a lot of you business people, you need to support the beacon. The beacon has been around for 75 years and has always supported you. One of the things that the beacon has always done is told our story as opposed to his story.
That's right.
So we've got to go back and support that which has always supported us. So on behalf of the Mobile Beacon, Jerome McNeil, Special Correspondent, Photographer for the Beacon, I ask you to please support it. Come out. We're gonna try to get together to a fundraiser simply because the beacon is a part of our community and we owe Mobile another opportunity.
You right. Don't move, young man. I call her the beacon lady. Y'all seen on my show several times. Been a while. She had been a little sick. She's okay. She's doing better. Y'all do need the support, man. It's kinda hard in the community to get support. I know people crunch for money, but some of y'all not, okay? Some of y'all can buy commercials. Some of you can put ads in papers. You know, you can do this stuff. And this is how you keep these things going and in business. Because a lot of them just went out of business, man. You know, you can't keep having them. We need things instead of being a liability, it need to be an access now. You know, it need to come in now. So you are right. Give them your name again and the phone number.
Jerome McNeil. Mobile Beacon is on Costa Rides. And more important, it's just as important, if you can't buy an ad, at least buy the paper.
At least buy the paper.
If you buy the paper, support it, I'm... We'll be around for another 75 years. God bless you. Thank you. And we're looking forward to your participation in the fundraiser.
Jazz Red, we love you. Jazz Red Talk Show, you know what time it is. Eat time. Jazz up here at Ayana's. Thank you, Ayana's, for buying a month worth of commercials. This young man is really helping Jazz. Jazz need to get some money so I can do something else. I need a limousine. Somebody donate me one. Anyway, we are here at Ayana's and this is the CEO and businessman. Tell them about your business, man. Tell them your name first.
Hey, guys. I'm Ronald Minifield, owner of Ayana's Kitchen, located at 1330 Spring Hill Avenue, Suite 8, Mobile, Alabama. 36604. Phone number here is 251-607-65...
You like your brother. You like your brother.
I forgot.
Man, get in the paper.
659830... 60735... I forgot the number, Jazz.
607... I'm reading it off the paper. 607. It's 251-607-6598. Your brother over there laughing because he know he don't know it. He know he don't know it. But one thing they do know how to do, ladies and gentlemen, they know how to cook. He know he don't know it. But one thing they do know how to do, ladies and gentlemen, they know how to cook. They might forget their phone number, but they ain't gonna mess your order up, okay? Unless you like me, I'm around here talking all the time. This boy fix me a scrambled egg. I will over like. But I eat it all. I'm a garbage disposal. It don't matter to me. But let me, let me tell you, uh this young man, thank you all. I wanna thank you all for coming out to Ayana's because, you know, I put him on and I said if we can help him get some customers, maybe they able to buy commercials. He has really proved that this works and uh thank you, Ayana, for patronizing with Jazz Red. So y'all are gonna see him every week, man. So we gonna, we gonna pump these plates too. Give them all the address. What address?
Address is thirteen thirty Spring Hill Avenue, Suite Eight, Mobile, Alabama, three six six zero four. Phone number two five one six zero seven six five nine eight. And we're located in the Five Point Shopping Center, uh a couple doors down from City Trends, across the street from Family Dollar.
Alright. Uh for my new viewers, what inspired you to go into this?
Uh for me to go into business, I had been working so long for so everybody else. I've worked for million dollar corporations. I've helped build corporations from the bottom, from the ground to what they are today. Uh and they're still open and striving and doing well. So uh after I put my wife through nursing school, I decided to just try to relax a little bit, but that didn't work and uh I went back and and my wife told me, Joe, why don't I just go ahead and open up my own? Uh because I know the business inside and out. So I was like, no, I think I will. And I did some work and uh found a location and just went from there and just continued to uh live my dream because I always wanted to uh open up my own business and um ever since uh before my daughter, which I named the business after, Ayana, she's thirteen now. So uh I've been working on this for thirteen years.
Wow.
So.
I seen her, I seen her plate you posted on Facebook. That look good and cooked.
Yes.
Wow. I think you gonna have a little competition now. At the house now. She gonna move right on in with you though.
Yeah, that's what I want. I want, we should strive to want our kids to do better than what we did.
That's right. That's right.
I want her to uh supersede me. She, I want her to just blow me out the water once because we do chop and everything at the house whenever we get a chance.
Wow.
And we compete against each other. So, yes.
Wow. Got the cooking show at the house.
Yeah.
Y'all know what time it is. Jazz Red like show and tell. When she was in school, we finna show you some plates. What we got uh, what we got in this beginning here?
We gonna start off with the pork chop sandwich.
Oh wow.
I went ahead and did the pork chop.
You did a pork chop. Yeah, we did a pork chop sandwich. Boy, Jazz getting harder. Look at that. Look at that.
Hand cut. My own, my pork chops. We hand cut our own pork chops.
Wow.
Lettuce, tomato, nice sized pork chop, nice sandwich for a dollar ninety-five.
Dollar ninety-five.
I mean, you can't beat that anywhere. I mean, it's, it's nice tender uh pork chop. I mean, just, just, just sink into it.
Looks seasoned just raw.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
Seasoned just raw. Alright, what's the next plate we got?
Next.
Ooh, look at that. Look at that, ladies and gentlemen.
Loaded baked potato.
Wow.
Broccoli, cheese, butter, salt, pepper, chicken, shrimp, real bacon, not imitation bacon bits or anything like that. Real bacon. And we cook it, the oil cook all, all, all the toppings and everything to order.
What's that little white thing on there?
Which ones? You have chicken and...
Oh, chicken, okay.
Chicken and shrimp.
Wow.
And then it comes with sour cream. So it's a little uh fully loaded baked potato.
Fully loaded, right there, ladies and gentlemen. Wow, I'm gonna keep it on there till you open that next plate. Wow. Uh oh.
It's our home style burgers.
Home style burgers.
Each one of our burgers, we hand make. We season it ourselves.
Lean it on up, lean it on up, homeboy. Wow. How y'all like that?
Nice thick piece of meat.
Ooh, and them home style fries out there.
Homemade fries.
Wow, homemade fries.
Cut them myself, just like the ones you make at home. If you, uh, depends on your age, you love them, you know?
Wow, you cut these?
Yes.
Wow, real potato.
Absolutely.
Wow. Man, y'all see what you got. This is, this is, all this stuff is, oh, wait a minute. Wait a minute, y'all ain't ready for this. The grand finale. We got, we got down to him.
We got pinto beans, fried chicken, bread, and we have all candy yams. That's the one.
Move your bread, man. Man, we show and tell. Look at that. Look at that. Wow. Look at that plate. That's your special for the day. How much is that?
This one here is gonna be seven ninety-five.
Seven ninety-five. You can't beat that because you go to Burger King and get you a, a Whopper, cheese and all that. That's eight dollars. With your fry and your soda. And you get a soda with this?
Absolutely.
Oh, man.
With a, uh, with a drink.
Wow. Y'all, uh, y'all got to come out to Ayana's, man. I mean, that's why, I mean, we need, we need good food for the babies. Get them used to eating uh home cooked meals, man. Get them used to eating home cooked meals, baked potatoes. Get them used to eating good stuff and they will eat that. They will eat what you eat. They will. And they'll drink water. They'll do whatever you do. So we gotta practice some good habits. Uh when we come back before we end, we gotta show a couple of other people up here. Jazz Red, peace out. Shout out Boyon and Shad up and get over here. Jazz Red Talk Show. We gonna go with ladies first. What's your name, man?
My name is Kathy Lockett. I'm in school right now for culinary and visions of opening my own restaurant, just like my brother here.
Wow. This your brother?
This is my brother.
Wait a minute, let's zoom in here. We got a family going on up here. Look at that smile, ladies and gentlemen. God, you can cook.
Yes, ma'am.
Wow. The whole, he told me the whole family can cook.
Yes, ma'am.
Wait a minute, how many of y'all? Huh? How many in y'all family?
It's four originally. I'm God's sister, but he won't say I'm God's sister. He called me his sister.
Okay, alright. It look like y'all got a little, you hit one, you gonna get beat up. There's so many of y'all.
It's possible.
Now look who we got over here. We got Shad Boyon. What's your name now, babe?
I'm DJ.
Okay, DJ.
I'm Donovan Minifield.
Okay, you love to cook.
Oh yeah.
Wow.
Have been to school with. It runs in the blood.
It just run in the blood.
Oh yeah.
Wow, man. I mean, he, he be holding it up. Cause I be eating, man. I know who can cook and who can't cook. He can throw down all of them. And this is a, a family, you know, this is a, uh well, it been awhile since we seen families get together and do stuff. Usually they'd be in the back, back there, give folk headlock, throwing pork chops at each other, fighting, you know? That's family. We are family, but uh all of them get along and they're, they're supporting their family member. And that's what I like. Cause I mean, uh in case you gotta go somewhere or be somewhere, they can hold it up. You know, cause uh Minifield, you was on vacation and your brother, he handling big.
Oh yeah.
Alright, so I, I like this. I like that. Y'all see the familiar faces. You've got to come up here. Give us that address again.
Thirteen thirty Spring Hill Avenue, Suite Eight, Mobile, Alabama, three six six zero four. Phone number two five one six zero seven six five nine eight. Ayana's Kitchen.
Y'all know I was looking at that paper because I don't want him to come over there and get them. Sometime when you doing so much, you'll forget the number, you know? Jazz Red, y'all come out and Jazz is gonna do a, a piece out on these plates. Y'all come out, please. I mean, this a man that, they feed everybody. They got a dollar bologna sandwich with lettuce and tomato. They got something for everybody's taste here. This is something for everybody. A dollar ninety-eight pork chop sandwich. Y'all come get your fried bologna sandwich. Y'all know how Powers used to sell that years ago. But that's another story, a chapter in my book I wrote about. Jazz Red, we love you. Peace out. Come out. Jazz Red Talk Show. I had not said this ever on my show. Jazz Red do have a YouTube channel. I've been on YouTube six years. Now I only got three hundred and something subscribers. So I'm gonna want y'all to take your phone out right now and this gonna right across this screen. I want you to subscribe to Jazz Red Talk Show. Everybody subscribe to the fighting, the cussing, you know, we got a clean show. It's a family show and I try to put everybody on. I try to showcase everybody. So y'all go to my YouTube under the, cause I used to say the, the, The Jazz Red Show. T H E J A Z Z Y R E D Show. The Jazz Red Show. A lot of shows y'all been on, you can go back through there and see a lot of you. And I'm gonna tell you why. I'm gonna thank you for letting me in your home. I've been on seven years. I have a variety show. If you see you, then don't cut it off. Watch the whole show. It's other people on here too. I don't just put one or two. It be a lot of people on here, okay? So I've been doing this for seven years and, and it's been working. People call me. They go to where I asked them to go. You know, I, I appreciate y'all patronizing Jazz Red, going to the businesses. And let them know you seeing on Jazz Red Talk Show. I wanna know the feedback and I know that we're in Montgomery. I know that we're in Birmingham. So y'all get, get to my YouTube and subscribe to me and, and start watching some of these shows, man. I mean, I put a lot of good people on Jazz. We searching for people that are doing good in the community, okay? I search for it. So as you seen the first of the show, we helped rebuild into McCall's Family Home. I'm gonna want y'all to come out. Every Saturday, we're gonna be there. And uh I want y'all to come out and we're gonna do McCall's phone number right behind me. Right behind that YouTube, we doing, cause I'm only putting YouTube on there. I'm putting McCall's Family Home number. You're gonna call Michelle McCall. We gotta help her. We did a lot Saturday. Y'all seen inside the thing where I was using the shovel. We did a lot Saturday, but we gonna do it every Saturday because I like to see a project done. When we send Jermaine Martin to the hospitals, we send him twice, thank the churches in there about it. We did it and we done it. We got through that young man had is operating. So we gonna get through with this house. It's going down. Jazz Red, we love you. Go to The Jazz Red Show YouTube. Peace out. Jazz Red Talk Show. Alright, now we up here at Gee's Haberdashery. This guy look glad, but I'm hoping y'all able to see this outfit. I'm on the outside. I want y'all to see this. Ain't that show? Boy, y'all first ladies don't like that. Look at that. Look at the detail on that dress. Wow. Jazz Red, we going on the inside. Wait a minute, Jazz Red done seen something over here for the men. I gotta show the men too now. Look at that. How you like that? Wow. Boy, that is odd. Look at that. How you like that blue? I'm hoping y'all can see that a little bit. Wow. How you like that? How you like that? We going on the inside. Jazz Red Talk Show. Before we get to CEO, I just want y'all to see these shoes. Look at him. You men. Y'all know Jazz is gonna put you on something. Look at here. Look at those shoes. How you like that? How you like that? This man got all kind of name brand stuff up in here. Look here, got the belt sitting on him. He gonna always color contrast and put some things together for you gentlemen. We gonna get the CEO before we show some other things. Jazz Red, we love you. Peace out. Jazz Red, I wanted y'all to see this. What is this here? This is a, a gator head on them belts. Man, y'all got to come up in here. You got to come check this out. I, I filmed it, but I didn't see it. Jazz Red, peace out. Jazz Red Talk Show. We got the CEO here. Tell them your name there, young man.
My name is Roy Powell, owner and proprietor here at Gee's Haberdashery, twenty-seven seventy-one Spring Hill Avenue, Midtown, Bright and Early.
Phone number?
Phone number is five nine one two six one five.
Okay, what you standing next to there, Rea?
Well, this is a creation by a young man by the name of Robert Lewis. Robert is no longer in business, but I, I, I thank God that I was able to be introduced to him before he changed his uh, his, his business.
Yeah.
But now we're uh, we're offering, still offering some products by him, but when these products are gone, then they won't be anymore on the market by Robert Lewis.
Wow.
We thank God for having um been able to purchase and provide while he was still intact.
Okay, we gonna show you another suit. What we got here, Rea?
Well, Jazzy, um this is, this is a combination of things.
Okay.
The shirt and tie again was designed by Robert Lewis.
Okay.
But this is a, a suit brand from King Wing. Apollo King is the name of the company.
Wow. That is show.
Very nice two piece.
And look at that lapel. Look at that lapel there. Wow.
Lapel flower is just an accent to what we're trying to do. So we...
Wow, we gonna show you another.
We're excited.
We're gonna show you. What we got here, Rea?
Well, same combination. Um, uh same designer. Uh Robert Lewis is the designer.
Okay.
And by the same token, we have a one hundred percent wool suit, navy blue business suit, suitable for church, suitable for business wear. Just versatile enough to be uh for the gentleman of class.
Wow. We gonna show you some. Jazz Red Talk Show. Man, you know something? I love them. Me and Adam nice shoes on, man. Y'all gotta see these shoes. What you got here, Rea? All these, these are, are, are just, wow.
Well, Jazzy, today's gentleman can't be afraid of color. It is springtime and we try to offer a line of product that's suitable for uh our weather.
Wow.
For the climate and for the season.
Wow.
Forward to serving the community and, and this, this area. We wanna encourage all the gentlemen who are particular about their wardrobes to come in and see what we offer here at Gee's.
Wow, yeah.
Everything for the gentleman from head to toe.
Wow, we gonna show you some bow ties now. Wow. Alright, what we got here, Rea? What we got?
Well, Jazzy, these are um bow ties for men.
Okay.
A lot of the gentlemen are wearing the pre-tied bow ties, but this is a selection by Vers Nine Neckwear.
Wow.
These are what are referred to as self-tie bow ties.
Wow.
Plan for those who maybe are not familiar with tying them themselves. Uh if, if, if they're willing to just drop by, we'll, we'll have a tie tying session.
Show them how to do it.
Teach them how to tie.
Now that's what I'm talking about. This is a gentleman shop now. This is a...
We're looking forward.
It's a gentleman shop. We gonna show you something else. What we got here, Rea?
Well, Jazzy, this is a, a selection uh by Paetelli, uh some by Stephen Land of a men's dress socks. We refer to these in the market as the fancies. All colors, designs, geometric, squares, stripes. And whatever it takes to complement uh the gentleman's wardrobe.
Okay, and what's this here you got?
Just another selection of ties.
Okay.
Uh they're on display because usually what we do is we coordinate the tie with the shirt.
Yeah.
So they have to be displayed in such a way that we can compare the two together and come away with a nice um combination. So...
Wow, we gonna show you something else. What we got here, Rea?
Well, Jazzy, what we're attempting to do here at Gee's is we try to provide um a full line of men's wearing apparel. We have various designers. You've, you've already portrayed that that's by Robert Lewis. This is one uh by a designer by the name of Tony Blake.
Wow.
We also have um a Tiglio Rossi. We, we also carry Stephen Land, various styles, and we're looking uh forward to having the community come in and see what we have to offer, compare us to the other vendors, and just come away knowing that it's our attempt to provide a, a class of wearing apparel for the gentleman here in Mobile that is second to none.
I'm showing all these shirts. You got every color shirt, every color uh, wow, man, you got some, I mean, they can just come in here and look. They gonna come out of here with something.
Yeah.
It is so nice. Oh, you got thongs. You got those, the sandals for the men. Wow.
Actually, they're men and women.
Men and women sandals.
These are handmade in Ghana.
Uh huh.
Um, these are African sandals.
Africans.
For men and women.
Wow. Now I like that. They look comfortable.
They are.
Wow, and that shoe. Look at that shoe up top. How y'all men like that? Wow, they look comfortable there. Wow, we gonna show you some other stuff. What we got here? This jacket here, Rea?
Well, Jazzy, this is a, a line of, of apparel.
Wow.
That's popular on the West Coast. It's by a company called Angelino.
Wow.
It's one that the, not only the, the middle aged gentleman, but the younger uh crowd seems to be attracted to.
Wow.
Slim fit design.
Yeah.
One that's very popular and, and becoming more popular here in our city. So we have to provide, various customers want different things, and so we try to provide everything for everybody.
Alright, we gonna show you something else. Jazz Red Talk Show. What we got here, Rea? What we got here?
Well, Jazzy, this is a display of a design by Marizio. The company is Vers Nine. Uh this is something a little different from what we've been doing um all along. For the most part, we've had a tie and a sock, a combination that coordinated. But Marizio had this idea of putting together a line where the sock and the tie matches one another.
Wow.
And this is our Vers Nine display on that product. And we're hoping that the uh gentleman will come and take a look and like what they see.
Alright, we gotta show the first ladies something and the ladies that uh, for your husband, they got it, but they got some lady stuff too. Alright, what we got here, Rea? What we got here?
Well, Jazzy, I, I know we're about to end the, the show.
Yeah.
But I didn't want you to, to leave without knowing that not only are we providing fashions for um the gentleman in our area, but also for the ladies.
Wow.
This is uh designed by Donna Vinci. Uh Lillian Taylor is another of the um designers.
Wow.
And many others. Dorinda Clark Cole and others. Uh if we don't have it, we can get it.
I'm even back there on the hats. You sell hats too?
Hats, shoes. Uh we are featuring uh the full line of Jay Renee shoes.
Oh, wow.
Very popular shoe that the women uh admire. So...
Some African lady, African attire too. Y'all, they've got so much that you've got to come in. I'm doing a sweep. Man, they got so much in here. You've got to come and look because if you come in, you gonna, you gonna really look. Now, Rea, I'm gonna want you to hold on a minute because Jazz got a little something. Your, your, your better half told me that you like old cuff links and Jazz has found some old cuff links. I want you to uh look at that. That's a gift to you. I always try to give my business people a little gift, but I wanted to get something special that you like. And you see that? That's an accent with gold and silver. But it's, it's old. It's old. And I, I figured you like that. I figured you like that.
Thank you so much. You are, you are one of the kindest people that I've ever met. You're always giving and I thank you for putting me on your giving list.
Alright, Jazz Red. Come out, give, give them the address again.
The address of our location is twenty-seven seventy-one Spring Hill Avenue, right in the heart of Midtown, at the corner of Spring Hill Avenue and Bay Shore Avenues, just across the street from the Regions Bank, um next door to Ely's Fabric Warehouse.
Uh give us a phone number.
Our phone number is area code two five one five nine one two six one five.
Alright, uh Jazz Red, I want y'all to, uh I had to stop in here once. We were, we were trying to shift off a breathing machine. The man weighed about seven or eight hundred pounds and their house had burned down. He lost his breathing machine. I come by, I told Rea, I need twenty more dollars to get it overnight. He gave it up. Jazz Red, we love you. Peace out. I'm your host Jazz Red. We here with uh Bishop Woods. We at Memorial Funeral Home. Uh I asked Bishop to speak on policies because uh a lot of the young girls, I would talk to them. They tell me they didn't want no policy because uh it's like they waiting on their baby to die or something. They don't wanna do that. Uh talk to him about policy.
Well, the importance of getting insurance policy is that it'll pay off in the long run. So many people don't realize that when you buy insurance and you purchase it when you're young, it's so cheap and inexpensive. If you try and wait till you're as old as I am, it's almost impossible to afford insurance. So when you're young, uh you probably can get a hundred thousand dollars uh for thirty dollars a month and then get your children covered. So it's important to get an insurance policy, a life insurance policy. Long years ago, they used to have burial policies, three hundred, five hundred dollar policies. I'm sure most people my age have a burial policy. But uh young people, if you can get a hundred thousand dollars worth of life insurance, that's some money that you can have to, for your children to live on if you suddenly pass away. That's money to pay for a funeral. That's money to uh help subsidize your children. It's important, young people, that you get an insurance policy. I, I, I was talking to some of my nephews about insurance and I could get them a million dollars worth of insurance for seventy-five dollars a month because they were in their twenties.
Wow.
And you know the first thing they said to me?
What?
I don't want anybody to get no money when we die. Y'all want me to die?
Yeah.
No, we don't want you to die. We want you to be covered. We want your children to be covered. Uh you don't wanna try, cry, try, cry twice.
That's right.
Cry when they, you don't have the money to bury someone. Cry because you don't have food to eat after the funeral.
Yeah.
So if you would think about it, if you would think that I need to get me some insurance while I'm in my twenties and my thirties and early forties, it's inexpensive.
That's right.
If you wait till you get in your fifties and sixties.
I know.
You can't afford it.
It's high.
Jazzy, uh instead of you going to McDonald's and Burger King every day and spending your money in fast food restaurants, you need to think, you need an insurance policy. You need something to subsidize your family at your death. A lot of our young children don't have uh money, don't have uh graduation expenses or anything because their loved ones is gone on and no money there. But if you think about someone you love dear, you wanna leave them something that can benefit them and their, and your grandchildren.
That's what, that's what uh they needed to hear. The young men tell me, when I'm out about filming uh on the streets and thing, they, I tell them about a policy. They tell me, soon as you get a policy, you die. No, you don't. No, you don't. That is not true, man. So many people got a policy. You gotta have a policy. That way you won't have to be out here on the street taking up money, chicken plates, you know, selling chicken plates. That's all good to try to hustle up money, but the family need less problems as possible when someone passed. And, and when, when you... And when you get it, when you older, it is. Get about a hundred thousand dollars, you get over fifty something, about two hundred a month. So it best to go and get it while you're young.
You know, what a lot of people don't realize is that, uh, I personally don't wanna stand on the street corners and beg someone for my loved ones that has gotten shot or someone that has died suddenly. I don't wanna stand on the corner and beg. So I make preparations now, make preparations for the future, that this is gonna come. If we live, we're gonna die.
That's right.
Uh, the Bible tells us that man that is born of a woman, it has a few short days. And so if your days already short, you know you're gonna leave here and caskets cost money.
Yes, they do.
Cemeteries cost money.
Yes, they do.
You know, all the things, plots cost money. These things cost money. You know, you wanna ride in a long, long white limousine, a long black limousine, you know? I went to a funeral and I won't say a person, but he was a very prominent businessman in the community, owned several stores.
Okay.
And when I got there, uh, everybody was sitting in rattiness and waiting, and so finally the wife showed up. And she came and her son said, Mama, where you been? She said, oh, I had to go to the store to get some paper plates and things, cause I'm sure y'all coming by the house after it. And I asked the question to the funeral director, I said, how, you don't make preparations, you don't prepare for your family to come? He said, we don't use limousines. He said, we don't use these type things. We drive our cars. And mama came up there in her pickup truck and she was driving, and she was the wife. And I'm talking about a prominent businessman.
Yeah.
So they don't go out for all the glitz and glamour at death.
Yeah.
You know, I don't wanna sideshow when my loved one die. When my mother passed away, I was in sympathy, I was in bereavement. I didn't wanna sideshow. My mother didn't live a life as a sideshow.
She didn't live a life with that. So you do it, do it the way they live a life. Now, if they can afford all that, the horse-driven carriage, you can get there. You can get it for them.
But why would you get a horse-driven carriage and you live in subsidized housing?
Well, I know that, you know that.
Why would you, why would you do this?
I know.
Why would you hire bands and orchestras and things to play and you living in a rental house?
We want, we want them to see the big of it. We want them to see the big of it. That's why I come up here, I want them to see the big of it.
I, 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 I could think of many people that could afford it. But why, when you can take that money and help your niece or your sister or your brother or your grandchild?
With college.
College.
That's right, that's what I'm coming out.
They wanna go around begging for money for college, cause most of our children are not prepared for college. So if someone don't give them a grant, someone don't give them something.
Scholarship or something, yeah.
So when you taking all of this money and you making a sideshow out of funeral, think about your grandchildren that need to go to college.
That's right.
You think about your family that needs a place to stay. And it looks like to me that all of our subsidized housing, Roger Williams and Owens Apartments there, Happy Hill, they're taking all those places away.
They're going away.
And so now what's happening to us? Most people don't have a place to stay if that isn't subsidized housing. And the other parts of town, people certainly don't want subsidized housing in there.